Okay, well, welcome. This is the Gladstone Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, July 21st at 6:32 PM. We have a relatively short agenda tonight, which is good because I know a lot of you participated last week in the training session we had from the folks from the state. So we won't ask too much of you this month. We've got some things for next month, too. So we're staying busy, which is good. Tammy Bannack, can you call the role, please?
Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Malachi.
Here.
Commissioner Poole.
I'm here.
Commissioner Williams. I do not see him logged on. Commissioner Pat Smith.
Here.
Peter Milch.
Here. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Look at Tammy's screen for the flag. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
Republic.
For which it stands. One nation, under God. Invisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
We only have one item on the consent agenda, and that's the minutes of the June 16th, 2020 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review those minutes? And are there any additions or corrections?
Yes, I did review it. Nothing jumped out at me in the way of needing to be corrected.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
All right.
I second that.
Motion by Malachi and a second by Commissioner Natalie Smith to approve the minutes of June 16th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Let's move on to the report for our planner. Joy, welcome back to our meeting.
Thank you.
And thank you for the written report, and we'll let you give a verbal report.
Okay. Tammy, are you gonna share your screen for this?
I'm gonna make you the host right now.
Oh. Well, I don't have the electronic copy of the.
Let me pull up what I got here. Hang on.
Okay.
Okay.
I have it in front of me, but I do not have an electronic version.
Bearing my screen now.
Perfect.
That's not what I want. This is what I want. Can everyone see the monthly report?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah. So in June, the Clackamas County Lobby, where people come for building permits and planning assistance, including planning assistance for the city of Gladstone, was closed until June 22nd. And so you'll notice that there were still zero customer service counter contacts in June. We are finding that visitation to the counter is lower than it was prior to COVID-19. And so this number may stay around zero, although we have had lots of emails and phone calls. As you see in the phone and email contacts for June, the number was very high. And we did have some building permits with land use review. We had an interior remodel. We had a shell building. We had a new single-family residence. And we had revisions to a bonus room that had been approved in 2018. The last two numbers of the building permit actually gives you the year that the building permit was opened. And you'll notice that the shell building is a 2019 permit, but as part of the building permit review, they needed to provide additional material, including items related to the land use decision Z0118-18 that the Planning Commission approved with conditions back in 2018. So this is a shell building over on 82nd Drive, High Rocks Business Park, that is currently being worked on from a building perspective. And then the revisions to the bonus room was a 2018 permit that had been approved as storage, and the owner is requesting to have some livable space. And similar to the homeowner you heard from last month, this homeowner is concerned with the ADU limitations. However, I do not believe he's here tonight, although I'm sure he wouldn't mind me saying that. Because it's hard to figure out for these small homes how to add additional living space without it being considered an accessory dwelling unit and meeting the 400 square-foot requirement.
To that end, should we also discuss that other email we got from Jackie tonight as well about the Oregon, about the, was it Oregon City?
The judgment or the ruling.
Yeah, I don't think we have to do too much about it specifically. That was mostly for informational purposes, but it does, you know, a lot of our discussion in the last couple of meetings has been about ADU requirements and codes that are barriers to people constructing them or adding them to their homes.
Right.
And so that will inform the broader amending of ADU codes that we do in the future, but we don't need to really deal with it tonight. But, you know, put it in a saved file somewhere and hold on to it because as we begin to look at ours, we want to be sure that we're not violating any of those things that the appeals court has decided, again, are inappropriate things in our, in our codes.
Perfect.
So, Joy, then you said, similar to last month's, I assume, and this is someone who wants to do a living space that exceeds the 400 square feet. Could be within a larger limit if we had one, but right now, the code is, again, kind of preventing them from doing that.
Correct. If allowed, his bonus room could be an accessory dwelling unit with 672 square feet. And currently, the, as you know, the code restricts it to 400 square feet. So we're trying to work on how to meet structural requirements in the Oregon structural code and have storage and living space in a way that will meet the zoning requirements and allow him to have a smaller living area. So. So in the future, tonight, we are going to be speaking about potential code amendments, file TXT 2020-02. And next month, you will have a public hearing for a potential comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment for the apartments at 18500 Webster Road. And so that will be next month.
Very good. All right. Do any commissioners have any questions for our planner?
No, I do not.
Regarding the person you were just talking about, do you know what percentage of their home would be covered by the space they want to do? Because we did talk about that as a possible option.
Um, the... It would not be inside the primary dwelling.
Okay.
It would be above a detached garage. And so as we're looking at floor, floor area ratios or percent lot coverage, there's going to be some discussion about, does it have to be one dwelling to be in, to be considered in the floor area ratio? Or what happens if you have two separate structures? How would you calculate that? Or, so if that is something you guys want to consider as a sizing mechanism for accessory dwelling units, there will be examples and a lot of discussion about potentials.
Okay.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the report of our planner?
I make a motion to approve the planning report.
I'll second that.
All right. Commissioner Langston moved, and Commissioner Poole seconded the motion to approve the planning report. All those, or any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the report is passed. Thank you. And we'll move on to the main agenda item, and we'll get a staff report regarding the proposed code amendments. Is that, is that going to be Jackie or David that will do the staff report?
That will be Joy as soon as I get her switched.
Oh, okay.
I believe you should now be our host, Joy.
But you can have any of us tonight, Michael.
Well, and I'm grateful for all the staff that are here because I never know what questions are going to come up. And I know several of you had a part in this and the way it's moved through the council to us, and it'll go back to the council. So that's all very helpful. Okay, Joy, let us know.
Okay. I am sharing my screen. Let's see if I can have access to it. Hmm. There. Now you saw multiple slides. Okay. Technology. Um, good evening. So in this proposed code amendment package, there are two sections of the code that we will be looking at tonight for proposed text changes. One is the definitions section, and one is the off-street parking standards within the C2 zoning district, section 17.18.070. And I, tonight with this PowerPoint, I'm going to start with the definitions because that began back in February with your last proposed text amendments. And then we will move into the off-street parking standards, if that's okay with you all.
Yes, thanks.
That sounds good.
So a little background, back in February, you all held a public hearing on proposed text amendments that would remove the off-street parking space and owner occupancy requirement for accessory dwelling units unless they were used as a vacation rental. And the text that you all recommended to the city council and that the city council approved through ordinance 1499 is on the screen in front of you.
Can you pause here? That last sentence on number two, that was the one of the reasons I was asking about that, that court thing, is I thought they said that that isn't allowed. About the, how we have to be owner occupied in one or the other.
That court thing, the case law or the court case that you had was for accessory dwelling units.
Yeah.
I did not see in that paper that it was accessory dwelling units used as a vacation rental.
Okay, so that makes a difference.
And as, as we go through this, you will see how that makes a difference and why we use that wording specifically in the text of the code as was proposed in February and adopted by city council.
Okay.
So in the R7.2 and R5, single-family residential districts in Gladstone, we, there is no longer a requirement for an additional off-street parking space or deed restriction unless an accessory dwelling unit is used as a vacation rental. And in that situation, there is, there are those two requirements, as you see on your screen. And what we found as we were preparing for the city council meeting is that vacation rental is not defined in the Gladstone Municipal Code. Accessory dwelling unit and dwelling unit are currently defined in the Gladstone Municipal Code, and you'll see those definitions there. And so to clearly, to help citizens understand what a vacation rental is and if their accessory dwelling unit will require an additional parking space and owner occupancy, it's important to define what a vacation rental is. And so a proposed definition would be that a vacation rental means a dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit providing vacation occupancy. And as, as I said, accessory dwelling unit is currently defined in the code as an additional smaller subordinate dwelling unit located on the same lot as a detached single-family dwelling. An accessory dwelling may be detached or within a single-family dwelling. And, sorry about that. And dwelling unit means one or more rooms for occupancy by one family for living purposes that is identified by a single street address and has common entrances and internal access. Taylor coaches shall not be considered dwelling units except when located in mobile home courts or parks. So using dwelling unit and accessory dwelling unit, which is already defined in the Gladstone Municipal Code, a vacation rental would be either of those that provide vacation occupancy. And the proposed definition for vacation occupancy, note the Oregon revised statute that defines vacation occupancy, but then clearly points out what that is. And so the staff would propose that vacation occupancy be defined at, as, vacation occupancy as defined by ORS 91.100 means occupancy in a dwelling unit not including transient occupancy in a hotel or motel that has all the following characteristics. The occupant rents the unit for vacation purposes only, not as a principal residence, and the occupant has a principal residence other than that unit, and the period of authorized occupancy does not exceed 45 days.
Is that consecutive?
It does not say consecutive in either ORS 90.100 or the proposed definition.
Right. So we don't have clarification if that's 45 days all at once, or 45 days in a year, or what that 45 days timeframe is?
I do not.
David?
Yeah, I think the, the intent there is that the, it would be consecutive, or at least as it concerns a particular renter. What I mean by that is, you know, the bizarre possibility that somebody might, you know, rent a place for three days, then, you know, go somewhere else for a day, then come back for another four days, or something like that. It's meant to capture the total occupancy for that individual short-term renter. I think in virtually every, almost every scenario, that's going to be consecutive days. But allowing for that weird possibility that you could have a break in somebody's, one individual or one group's rental, my guess is that's why it doesn't say consecutive.
I'm just curious, like, what, does it allow for, like, every other month, for example? Because that wouldn't be 45 consecutive days.
Yeah, I think you'd be, I think you'd be looking then at the, at, at what the, in that case, if you had somebody that was leasing a space for every other month, this is where things get very gray. If they didn't have a long-term lease that would say, every other month, I'm going to be renting this, but rather just happen to be coming back every other month and renting, I think that, that latter example would be a vacation occupancy. So that maybe not helped much in terms of making it clearer, but I would suggest leaving it with that, that, that definition. At least it allows for some of that discussion and interpretation if it ever came up.
David, this is Pat Smith. I have a question that kind of follows Malachi's. I take this to mean that you could, someone could rent this as a vacation rental for 45 consecutive days, leave, you could come in and clean it up, and you could rent it to somebody else for 45 consecutive days, and someone cleaned it up after they left, and you could continue to do that in that fashion. Is that correct?
I think that, I think that is, that is correct. Yes.
That is my understanding.
Yep. That, basically, the, that you, you wouldn't be able to stay for longer than 45 days. Correct.
It doesn't, it doesn't limit it to 45 days of rental in a specific period.
Right. That's true. Yep.
As I recall, from people I know who have, you know, condos at the beach that they rent out to people traveling to the coast, there are even some kind of rules related to the tax laws that have to do with how many days it's occupied as a rental and how many days it's occupied perhaps by the family that owns it. So you wouldn't want somebody restricting you the total number of days you could rent it throughout the year. But this looks like for just the period of one occupancy at a time, as, as Pat described it.
I think that's right. Yeah, it really goes to the, I, what I guess what I would say is the the, the practice of the landlord. You know, if, if, if any authorized occupancy exceeds 45 days, then by this definition, you would not have a vacation rental. So the idea is to capture basically what happens in virtually all of the scenarios where somebody's renting it, that, that, that a person that owns the property is renting it out, you know, for, for many short-term periods, none of which exceed 45 days.
Okay, Joy.
Um. As House Bill 2, as we discussed in February, House Bill 2001 does not prohibit local governments from regulating vacation occupancy to require owner occupancy or off-street parking. So you're allowed to do that according to House Bill 2001. And so it was important to use vacation occupancy and vacation rental in a way that supported the current Gladstone Municipal Code, but also the regulations that we work under that regulate land use in Oregon. And I'm trying to get control of my PowerPoint again. There we go. So the Gladstone Municipal Code, Section 17.68 establishes the authorization for amendments and zone changes. And Section 17.94.060 specifies that the Planning Commission shall hold a public hearing and make a recommendation for any amendments or zone changes to the city council. And so we are here tonight to hold that public hearing for the Planning Commission to consider these proposed changes. And because it's related to the amendments that you all reviewed in February that were related to accessory dwelling units, and because it's related to House Bill 2001 that has the goal of meeting that housing needs of all segments of the population, I thought it was appropriate to use the same section of the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan that you all considered in February, and the statewide planning goals of citizen involvement and housing and transportation that were the statewide plan goals that were applicable to the, the amendments to Section 17.10020 and 17.12030 that is where vacation rental is used. Before we jump into the next proposed amendments, are there any further questions about the, these two potential definitions?
Joy, this is Pat Smith again. I, I'm not challenging the depth, the depth, the language, but I want some personal clarification.
Okay.
I know you weren't at the meeting last month, but we had a woman who wanted to create an ADU in the basement of her home. And then the one we, that was just discussed this evening, was going to be over a garage, not attached to the actual house. That I can see where it's not contiguous with the rest of the building. But what makes a basement unit an ADU, other than simply you have a student or an elderly relative living in your basement? Where's, where's the, where's the line that makes the definition that makes it an ADU?
The additional smaller subordinate dwelling located within the primary dwelling. So it, it relies on these two definitions, the accessory dwelling unit definition and the dwelling unit. And if you look at dwelling unit, it is for occupancy by one family. And so if the accessory dwelling unit is to be used by a separate family, then it would be an accessory dwelling unit. If that, if, if, that, if that individual's basement has a kitchen, a bathroom, and living space that will be used by a separate family unit, then it would be an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, so the non-related family is what makes it an ADU?
It's one of the pieces. The other is the internal access and the street address. If an ADU has a separate street address so that they can get mail, if it has, does not have internal access, if they put a wall separating the basement from the upstairs,
The separate street address makes a very different picture. I wasn't, I didn't understand that.
Are we currently requiring a separate street address for ADUs? I didn't think we were.
Based on what Mike Funk said a couple months ago, that was one of the things he would like to see, a requirement of a separate address for accessory dwelling units because it would assist with fire.
Right.
Response.
But it's not in the code today, right?
It's, it is not a requirement, but it is one piece of the puzzle for a separate family living there. They may want to have a separate address for their house that they're renting long-term or their, their accessory dwelling unit that they have a long-term rental.
I think to Pat's point, though. I think to Pat's point, though, um, you know, if three different people that are unrelated are sharing a house, the different bedrooms are not ADUs, right? There's a difference.
Correct.
Being clear on what the difference is would be helpful.
If you look at the definition of a family member, it's up to five people. Living together as one household keeping unit. And we can pull up the Gladstone Municipal Code if you would like to jump between the definitions of dwelling unit, family, household unit, um, if that would be assist, helpful for you all.
Isn't, uh, so a dwelling unit obviously is somewhere where, uh, you know, you could dwell. Uh, an accessory dwelling unit is somewhere within the dwelling that you can, like, essentially inhabit and not have to go into any other part of the home to, to achieve, you know, whatever, your, your living situation. So you should be able to cook there, clean there. Uh, yeah, it's just, it's a, it's a dwelling within a dwelling.
Correct.
Yeah, it's better described almost like an apartment. I hate to use that, the A.D.U. But, exactly, and, and back to Commissioner Smith's question, you know, in order to be a dwelling unit, it, it, it's gotta have a kitchen, not just a microwave. It's, it's gotta have certain things. So physically, those things, if they're not in place, it almost doesn't matter how it is. It's, it's, it's an addition or extra rooms to a house versus actually being a separate unit.
Correct.
Am I understanding also by what you're saying that it needs to have a separate standalone entrance, like a door going into the separate area?
And you see, when you see building plans for an accessory dwelling unit, they have a, a door that is either to the garage or to the outside, um, that does not connect it to the main house. So that they can leave the accessory dwelling unit without going through the main house.
Okay.
What, what happens if the property, somebody puts in an ADU and then it is sold?
Well, once that accessory dwelling unit is built, um, it depends on when it was built and if they followed the Gladstone Municipal Code when it required owner occupancy and, um, additional parking space.
Okay, but what, what if somebody?
That owner occupancy on record saying, you know, that when it was built, either, um, the owner lived in the ADU or the primary dwelling. Now, it would not have that. Um, and so now, your question is fair. When that property is sold, if the accessory dwelling unit is inside the primary dwelling and they remove the, the wall that separates the basement from the upstairs, or they remove that door to allow it to have internal access again, then it could be considered part of the same dwelling. Um, and so there's, there, it's harder than you think to define a dwelling unit and an accessory dwelling unit, but it's.
Hard to speak on clear.
Yes.
What, what would, what, what, what makes that after it has been sold of it becoming a duplex?
If it's not, uh, created as a duplex prior to being sold?
Correct. I, I just, let's say that, uh, I bought, I bought one, I turned it in, into an accessory dwelling unit. Some buyer comes in and says, well, gee, I've got a duplex here now. Um, where, where is the line drawn? That, what, what would happen? And, I mean, maybe I'm stepping further, but I'm just looking at it, it's, are we gonna be getting a bunch of duplexes?
The owner has to occupy one of the residents, one of the buildings.
If it's a vacation rental and the owner would have to occupy it right now, as it stands right now, if it's not a vacation rental and it's just an accessory dwelling unit, what separates an accessory dwelling unit from a duplex is the size limitation. If it's four hundred square feet in size, um, or less, it would be an accessory dwelling unit and not a duplex. Now, you tell that to potential buyers or other people, and they may, they may not see that, but that is, that is how, um, I would look at it, uh, is looking at the accessory dwelling unit. Um, with that size limitation of four hundred square feet, if it meets that, that's an accessory dwelling unit. If it's bigger than that, then you're getting into a, a duplex.
And Commissioner Williams, after our meeting last month, uh, I think it was last month, when we talked about, um, uh, looking at, at the limitations, uh, oh, we were comparing some of the rules that different cities in Clackamas County had for ADUs, uh, including the size limitations, because our size limitation is very small here in Gladstone. And, uh, and there, there seemed to be a consensus among the commissioners that, that we needed a larger, uh, maximum size for ADUs. So I was looking at code language in other communities, and I, I think it was Oregon City that had some code language that said, you know, presuming that the size limitation was such that it could fall, that, that it could meet either ADU requirement or, um, duplex requirement, that at the time, you had to decide which it was, and that it would be that forever. Uh, so that if you designed a building, uh, and called it an ADU, then it would be an ADU. You couldn't later change and said, now it's going to be a duplex. Now, upon selling it to someone else and remodeling it, that might be a completely different thing. That was the example that Joy shared. But, uh, you can't kind of go back and forth and call it a duplex one year and an ADU another year, according to that code that I was reading. And, uh, so we might want to keep that in mind, uh, because you raise an interesting, interesting question. And it's helpful if we codify the answer to that question, so that it's very clear to anybody who wants to, you know, to venture on this, that, um, you know, that this is the way the rules would be.
And I believe.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering why, what would stop it from, once it's sold, becoming a duplex, even though it's called an ADU? There's, is there any stipulations that would, in, in the owner, it's, it's an investor that's buying it?
Well, I would add a couple of thoughts for you. One, one is that if the ADU is subordinate or smaller, um, and again, it gets back to size. Uh, and, and when it comes to duplexes, typically duplexes have separate addresses. I think we could get awfully far in the weeds here, and we need to be in the weeds, but maybe we're getting too far, so. Um, and, and I think our biggest issue goes back now, spinning back or going back to, is the vacation occupancy. And what happens when you take that vacation rental and you sell the home? Um, you know, does it stay? And, and so, this gets a little squirrely, but, but I think, I think for practical purposes, the language that's here, um, covers our needs.
And I think when you're selling, you're selling the property anyway and everything on it, right? So.
Yep.
Right. And obviously, anything that has a deed restriction is gonna be very, very clear, and that's why it's done. Um, not that every one of these has a deed restriction on it, but where, where a deed restriction is, is recorded, obviously, that circumvents a lot of confusion. I know our conversation here is really trying to look down the, the road with a, with a magnifying, or with a telescope and see where we're gonna be. Um, but again, I think, um, I, I think we're getting into an area where maybe some code tweaks in the future will occur. And if they do, I don't know if this would have to be somehow revisited, but I, I just think we've got this as close as we can.
Well, okay, I, so I think, um, we've raised some good questions tonight, and when we get to that point where we look at the broader code for ADUs later on, uh, we'll make sure that, uh, we remember these questions that came up tonight. But, uh, the, the, the amendment we're proposing tonight has only to do with adding those definitions.
Right.
Uh, we, we, perhaps the city council could have added them themselves back in March when they approved the original language. But, uh, Joy has, you know, brought it to us to go through the proper channels. It goes through us first and then back to them. Uh, and, uh, so we'll, we'll continue to look at that. Joy, was it your idea that we would have a, uh, open it up for public testimony on this matter, uh, separate from the, um, the, um, civic building, uh, off-street parking, or do we want to do it all at once?
I think it would be good to open it up for testimony now if you, uh, if there is anyone who has testimony.
All right. Tammy Bannick, do you know if we have anyone else attending tonight or participating that, uh, would like to participate?
I, I am not aware of any, but Joy currently has hosting, and so I don't know who else is on.
And I'm currently sharing my screen, so I can't see everyone.
I don't see anyone on here.
No, I don't either, so, uh,
Cause I may be able to see.
I will open the public hearing, and hearing no input from the public, I will close.
Chair, Chair Milch, hold on one moment.
Okay.
Um, I, I have gone through my, my participants, and I am checking to make sure that, um, the participants are unmuted. Uh, I believe David and Jackie are muted, so it, but if they don't have anything as the public, then, um, that's fine. We do have, uh, Tamara Will- Williams with us.
No, that's me. That's Darren.
Okay.
Commissioner Williams.
Perfect. Okay.
So, that's what I was just gonna, just gonna mention. It, it, it may be wise, if we're not clear about, um, maybe wise just to open it for a moment and see if anybody, if we can unmute people, if anybody has any, uh, from the public that we may not be aware of, any comments.
Okay, uh, I, I'm opening the public hearing. If there's anybody out there who's, uh, participating by phone or by computer and can unmute and, uh, would like to have some input, this is the time to do that. Well, I heard none, so I'm going to say that the public hearing regarding the definition of vacation rental is closed. And let's move on to, uh, the remainder of the amendment.
There is a recommended, um, motion at the end of the entire thing related to vacation rental and vacation occupancy. So, I did not forget that, but it is tied into the, the same slide as a proposed, um, motion for the next, uh, text for your consideration. So, the, the next thing that we will be considering are the parking standards for the C two zoning district. And the background for this consideration is that Clackamas County is in the initial stages of designing a new library for the city. So the county and the city are working together, um, to develop a new library. And they are going to be using the site of the old city hall, which is zoned C two, community commercial. Um, and C two is subject to Section seventeen point one eight of the Gladstone Municipal Code. And in that code, um, new commercial uses that are substituted for old commercial uses, where the building is not expanded by more than ten percent. And the use does not require additional parking, does not have to provide more parking than, than what is currently there. However, a library is not necessarily a commercial use. Um, it's more of a institutional or civic use. Um, and so there was uncertainty about whether the county could rely on that section of the code to build the library without additional off-street parking, um, if the building was modified. And as you know, the plan was to remove the building entirely.
Do you know if the new plans would fit within the ten percent guideline?
They would not. There are too many issues with the current structure to, um, that would need to be, uh, completely um, modified to meet the needs. And the the current structure pretty much takes up the entire parcel. And the proposed changes would also take up a lot of the, the parcel um, with the addition of a loading dock. But the, it's this use that the library is not really a, a commercial use. So would it be able to use this? We don't know. And so, instead of, um, trying to defend that uncertainty, the city council supported the, uh, you all in considering potential text amendment to the Gladstone Municipal Code. And so currently, Section one seven point one eight point oh seven zero has a Section one that states where one commercially use allowed outright is substituted for another in the existing building. And the building is not expanded by more than ten percent of the floor area used for commercial purposes on January one nineteen eighty. No more off-street parking shall be required than was proposed by the previous commercial use. Where successive expansions of a building are proposed, the total area of all expansions shall not exceed ten percent. What is being proposed is to add an item number two. And that item number two, uh, could read, if a community service facility or civic use allowed outright is substituted for another on the same property, whether in the same building or a new building, no more off-street parking shall be required than was possessed by the previous facility or use.
Can I ask a question here?
Yeah.
So, David, your, uh, letter, um, if I understood it correctly, it was suggesting that number two mimic number one. But I'm noticing that the restrictions are not there on this proposal.
Yeah, it was, but, uh, uh, it wasn't meant to be, uh, uh, a, a, a perfect one-for-one mirror. Um, my, my goal with the amendment was to have something that recognized, as Joy said, that, uh, commercial uses are allowed, um, or, or, or given a certain amount of grandfathering. Um, and, uh, that we would extend that, uh, in this case, more liberally, uh, to a, uh, a community service facility or a civic use. I use the term community service facility simply because it's used uh, in, uh, seventeen, uh, eighteen, um, and is described as being things such as a library. Uh, so, it, it, it's, it's not meant to be a one-for-one mirror. Um, it is, uh, admittedly gonna be a little bit broader and a little more, uh, permissive than it would be for a commercial use.
From a planning perspective, that is beneficial due to looking at a building that has been there since the seventies or the fifties even. Sometimes it is hard to find when it was expanded. Or what the, if that ten percent has been met. So, when you're looking at a building that has had multiple expansions or renovations, um, and you're going back, uh, to a time where maybe the building permits were not uh, archived as well as they are now, sometimes it can be very difficult to determine if ten percent is met. And so by removing that, And so by removing that, it helps to clearly say if it, the use is allowed outright and it's being substituted one for the other in the same location. And so it, it removes some of that difficulty in determining if this is met from a planning perspective. So just so you all know.
And do you know if the old library location is being planned to be used as parking for this facility?
I do not know that.
You want me to chime in on that one?
Please.
I was just gonna suggest that.
First of all, if everybody could mute their phones, because after we did the public hearing, you're on unmute, and that will help with the chatter. The, the answer is, we don't know. The city retains ownership of that property. There is value in the property, not so much in the building. I suspect that there's not going to be any issues with continuing to use the existing parking that is there in addition to what's being proposed tonight. And I also expect that in, in January of 2021, when the city council, and we will have three, potentially three new counselors, it will be on their goal-setting strategic planning to discuss what they want to do with that property. It could be that the county wants to lease it for parking. It could be that the city wants to list it and see if they can sell it. But to answer your question, we don't know what we're going to do with the property where the building is at.
So we should not assume it's available for use for this?
I would not assume. Our property schedule this year indicated that there's about $450,000 in land value. So the city does need to at least go through a process before they decide just that they want it to be a parking.
Thank you, Jackie. One other comment I'll make about paragraph one, just to put it into context of what's out there now. Some of you know, just within the, the few years that I've been involved in Gladstone, the, the building that is now the Hawaiian ice, Hawaiian shaved ice, used to be a hair salon. The building that is now the holistic health store was a comic book store not too long ago. And we recently opened the Gladstone Mercantile, which is like an antique store in a building that at one time, I believe, was a delicatessen that made sandwiches. So this provision in the code has been applied quite frequently to have one commercial building turn into another kind of use. I'm holding up, this is the American Planning Association Parking Standards Book. It's got a list of all kinds of different uses and different parking requirements that communities across the country use for various things. And this, this provision in the code changes it so that if you, if you have one kind of code for a restaurant and another kind of a code for a dental office and, and something else, but a building gets converted from one use to another, you don't have to all of a sudden go through, you know, the difficulty of adding a new off-street parking space to it. So we've, we've made use of this, tried to made it a smooth transition from one use to another if they're fairly similar uses. And, and the point here was seeing that if a non-commercial situation could be treated in a similar way. The primary difference being that the existing code references existing buildings. And the change we're making tonight reflects a similar use on the same building site, but could potentially be a, a different building. So we're not reusing the city hall and turning it into a library. We are, we will be demolishing the city hall and replacing it with a new building that will also be a civic or community service facility, but it will not be the same building. Okay, Joy, you can.
So by adding a number two to the section, we would have to renumber the existing two to a three. And that's the only item on this page that would be changing from what the code currently says. If you would like to read it in context, this is in the same section of the C2 zoning district section in chapter 17. If an existing residence in the C2 zoning district along Portland Avenue is converted to commercial or mixed-use development, additional off-street parking shall not be required, subject to the following standards. The new commercial use shall not exceed a B occupancy rating. Signs on the building shall be on the building and indirectly illuminated. The use shall generate low traffic volumes and require minimal off-street parking. And structures and landscaping shall retain a residential appearance. That is what is currently in the code. The C2 zoning district is just along Portland Avenue, up to Abernathy. It is this salmon-colored pink that you see in the map here. And so this proposed amendment would only apply to these parcels within this stretch of the C2 zoning district, within Gladstone.
Looks like also a little bit to the bottom left.
Right here. Oh, they're, they're right there. Yeah. Correct. So as David mentioned, a community service facility is currently used in section 17.18. And it is described as a fire station, a library, a community center, a park, a utility facility, or a meeting hall. And so by having community service facility or civic use being able to be substituted for one community service facility or civic use with another, this is what would be considered a community service facility. Similar to the other proposed amendment that you all saw and discussed earlier, section 17.68 establishes the authorization for amendments and zone changes in the Gladstone Municipal Code and specifies that, and section 17.94060 specifies that the planning commission shall hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the city council. Now, this, this proposed change touches on different goals within the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan, which is why it was separated out for this, the PowerPoint tonight. The transportation goal in the Comprehensive Plan is to promote a safe, efficient, and convenient multimodal transportation system that emphasizes mass transit and a street circulation pattern designed to serve people first. And policy one is to promote decreased reliance on the private automobile. What's interesting is that the Comprehensive Plan has a policy directly related to libraries within the facilities and services section. And the facilities and services section goal is to provide and maintain needed facilities and services in a timely, orderly, and efficient manner to serve urban development in the Gladstone area. So by, oh, by supporting this proposed amendment, you would be supporting the Comprehensive Plan Policy 9 that is continue to coordinate library services with Clackamas County to ensure they keep pace with present and future resident demand. And continue to espouse a policy of concentrating library facilities and services in the existing central location. So it's not the exact same parcel, but it is across the street from where the library was. And by not requiring additional parking for the redevelopment of parcels in the C2 zoning district for commercial uses or community service facility, the private, the private personal vehicles in support of the transportation goal. Statewide planning goals, this, you are holding a public hearing tonight to get public input. We, we noticed this hearing in the paper. And I, I had many people thinking that we were going to be discussing next month's agenda tonight, who called and were told about tonight's meeting and the subject of tonight's meeting. And I, I put in goal 11 here because it is the public facilities and services statewide planning goal. It does not mirror the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan Facilities and Services goal. The statewide planning goal 11 is focused on ensuring that there is adequate water and sewer service to public facilities, or, or that public facilities are adequate to serve the development that's being proposed. It does not discuss libraries in the statewide planning goal. And so I wanted to draw that difference between the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan and the statewide planning goals for you all. However, the statewide planning goals does have a transportation goal similar to the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan. Are there any questions about the proposed text amendments to section 17.18.070?
I have a question on, again, off-street parking at this new library. And granted, the old city hall is going to be torn down. But boy, unless they're really good at hiding things, I've never seen any off-street parking at city hall. There's diagonal parking along Boardman and a little in front of the building. Across the street at the current library, there's somewhere six to eight spaces. So are we talking about building a new library across the street with no off-street parking?
We're, we're, the library is proposed for the current city, or the old city hall location on the corner of Portland Avenue.
Will it be required to have off-street parking?
Um, that is unclear in the code, and that is why we're here today. It would appear that they would be required to have a significant number of off-street parking. I, if, yeah, I don't have the number in my head from one of our meetings, but I think it was around 11.
The, the current code for a library in the Gladstone Municipal Code is one space per 400 square feet. So a 6,000-square-foot library would need to have 15 spaces based on that. And then there is additional two spaces, or one space per two employees. And Mitzi Olson, the library director, tells me there typically are four employees on staff at the library. So that would need an additional two. So the code would require 17 off-street parking spaces. And anticipating this discussion tonight, when I went up to the new city hall last week to pick up my copy of tonight's agenda, I, I took a tape measure with me and I looked at where the first 17 parking spaces were in the new civic building and measured the square footage that they take up, including the 25-foot-wide entrance from the street into the parking and, and, and the space to be able to turn and, and get into the spaces. And it measured 66 feet by 110 feet, which is a little over 7,000 square feet. So our current code, if we maintained a requirement for off-street parking, a 6,000-square-foot library could be required to have more than 7,000 feet of space devoted to parking, which would be very difficult on a 9,100-square-foot plot of land.
Right.
One, one other thing too, and if I missed this, I apologize. But I think one other point that is worth mentioning and, and for the planning commission's consideration is, in addition to the Comprehensive Plan provisions that Joy had in her slides, the city adopted in 2018 a amendment to its Comprehensive Plan that dealt specifically with downtown. And that had been something that was really kind of the end of a process that had kind of gone through a couple different iterations over the years. But the long and the short of it is that the, the downtown revitalization plan that was, went through a public process, went through hearings, just like you're doing tonight, a lot of discussion on it. And, and the thrust of that, or at least one of the things that came out of that and was ultimately adopted into the comp plan, was a desire and a belief that ultimately reducing off-street parking in downtown would enhance the goal of making downtown a more vibrant place, a place that would draw in more visitors. So, I mean, admittedly, the plan is more specific than that. It doesn't just say that in a couple sentences. There's a few different provisions. But the, the point I wanted to make is that a change like this is also not only consistent with, with some of the things that we've been talking about and, and pointed out specifically, but also this revitalization plan that really was a point that was looked at very closely. Consultants were involved, whether that's a good or a bad thing. And, and the, the idea being that if, maybe counterintuitive as it might seem, reducing some of the requirements for parking would basically allow for more of the uses that you want to see in downtown. That's maybe if ever particularly true with the library. And you may be familiar with how long and how much of a, well, ultimately, it worked out great, but, but it was, you know, quite an uphill struggle to get Gladstone to this point. And to meet the, the needs for not only current patrons of the library, but future patrons of the library, really putting it on that site is a matter of maximizing the available space on that site to the greatest extent possible. And that's another big piece of this. So it's, you know, I, I just didn't want that piece to get lost in terms of the, the work that has been done with respect to comp plan amendments and the downtown revitalization plan and the, the efforts that have gone in over the years to the library and really trying to make the most efficient use of the old city hall site.
If I can make a recommendation, we should do the public hearing portion for the second one. And then we should make sure to do our discussions for both of these items as well before we do any voting.
Okay, so Jackie, if you would, we, I think we may have interrupted you. If you want to complete the presentation and let us know when would be appropriate time to switch to a public hearing.
I, I believe you just called me Jackie.
Sorry, Joy.
No, that's, that's fine. Um, I, I was at the end of my presentation, so if you would like to open it up for the public hearing, that would be great. And thank you, David, for adding that, that information. And Chair Milch for having all those numbers that you had. That was very helpful. So thank you.
You're welcome. So once again, if there are any, if there is anyone in attendance at the meeting tonight by telephone or by Zoom on your computer who is in a position to unmute and participate in the public hearing, I ask you to make yourself known now. Hearing none, once again, I will assume that there is no public input. So you, you said you, Joy, you had people asking about it because they thought we were going to be discussing something different. But when they found out what this was about, this was not something that the individuals who called were concerned about. Okay, so I will close the public hearing and open it up to. So I will close the public hearing and uh open it up to discussion from uh members of the commission. Malachi, did you have a, a comment to make?
We should discuss each one, one at a time, I think, and vote on each one separately.
All right, so let's look at the um, the definition of vacation rental sort of completes the amendments that we did in February by giving us a legal definition within our code, so there's no ambiguity about what that means. Uh, so.
Can you all, can you all see my screen again?
Yes.
Yes.
Would you mind temporarily going back to the definition we're proposing?
That is great. And I unfortunately have it on two different pages, so.
I think the second one is fine, the larger one.
That one?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So personally, I, I do have a slight concern about C not being well-defined, just because we've been told in the past that if, if it's not well-defined, then there's no enforcement possible. However, uh, based on David's comments, um, you know, it is being recommended by legal that we keep it this way, so I would be okay doing that.
And for clarification, Joy, this definition uh mirrors the ORS ninety-one point one hundred definition. So that language about the period of authorized occupancy does not exceed forty-five days comes straight out of state law?
Correct. And elsewhere in the Gladstone Municipal Code, um, the, a particular ORS is referenced, but it is not spelled out. And it has created some uncertainty of, at, as the years go by, sometimes definitions in the Oregon Revised Statutes are changed. And so there is some uncertainty of what the city means by definition. If it's only defined by the Oregon Revised Statute. But I thought it was important to include the Oregon Revised Statutes where, with that, that presented the definition and then provide that definition from the Oregon Revised Statutes. So there is no confusion in the future what vacation occupancy means.
So that at some point in the future, that the definition of vacation occupancy in the state code, it was given a different number. We still have the language uh and it won't be just by reference to a number that might at some point in the future have nothing to do with that. So uh, it's, it's good. This, this puts it right there and makes it clear to the person who looks it up.
If the state updates the, their definition and we want to incorporate that, is that another public hearing?
Probably so. If it, if it was substantially changed, I guess we would have to.
Yes.
Let's hope that.
Yeah, if it was significant, there would definitely be a requirement for a public hearing if you were amending it, but that would be certainly chucked down the road.
It, it, and the, one other thing too on that, not to get uh uh in the weeds here, the um, some of these, it depends upon the definition and it depends upon the context, but but, but sometimes the, the state definition is going to trump regardless, no matter what you have in your code. So um it's always a bit of a moving target. I, I think really the way I look at this and kind of the way that, that Joy has presented it, another way to think of it is that it's as much for the reader's convenience as it is for anything else. Um, it can, you know, these, these particularly in land use planning can get about as Byzantine as it gets and people have enough frustration when uh things are right in front of them. So I think the, the more you can kind of lead them to what the, what, what we mean by a certain term, um, the better off we are.
And remember that the reason we, we um put these provisions in our code back in February was that they originated at the state legislature. This is not something we uh decided to do here in Gladstone. So to be consistent, uh, these are changes in ADU codes that are, that are required to go into effect throughout the state, uh, at least in regions of a certain size. And uh, and we, we got the meat of it. We just had to have one more definition to uh, to complete the process.
For clarity's purposes, for the, for the applicant, yes.
So would you entertain a motion? Are we there?
I, I will. Uh, yeah, we can continue to discuss after the motion if there is more discussion, but I'll entertain a motion now. Uh, so uh, Joy had two recommendations for us, so if you can look at your agenda or if she can bring it up again. Uh, someone would like to make a motion based on this par, this first paragraph.
Uh, Mr. Carroll, I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed changes to the Gladstone Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point oh six. Uh, in the, you know, regarding vacation rentals and vacation occupancy uh changes to, to definitions.
All right, do we have a second?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
All right, uh, Commissioner Poole moved and Commissioner Pat Smith seconded a motion to approve the proposed changes in uh code section seventeen oh six. Is there any additional discussion from members of the commission? All right, let's take a vote. All those who would, who would uh approve this motion, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no.
Chair Milch, I'm sorry, I think we need to do a roll call on this one.
All right, thank you very much, Tammy. Let's do, let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Malachi?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Chair Milch?
Yes. The motion passes by a vote of seven to zero. All right, and now um, we can go ahead and entertain a motion for the second one and then do our discussion uh in, in uh the context of a motion. Does anyone like to make a motion regarding the uh second proposed text changes?
I'll make a motion to approve uh the proposed text change to seventeen point one eight point zero seven zero to support the redevelopment of community service facilities and civic uses in the C two zoning district.
And I second that motion. This is Commissioner Smith.
All right, we had a motion by Commissioner Langston, the second by Commissioner Natalie Smith to approve the text changes to seventeen point eighteen point oh seven zero. Is there any discussion from members of the commission?
Yeah, good. Um, so this is something we've talked about in the past, but I, I want to bring this up with the context that while we're talking about this from the point of view of the library, this code is not specific to the library and I want us to keep that in mind. So when we're looking at this code, we have to consider this as being used by some random team five, 10 years down the road on some random property, right? My concern with the way it's written right now is it would allow for a two hundred square foot building to be replaced with a ten thousand square foot building without changing parking requirements. And I understand that we have requirements to try to reduce the parking necessary in general. But I think that there not, not being any uh requirements here, any uh conditions uh makes that a little too lenient for city purposes. We would never allow that if it was a public member trying to do the same thing. So I think we need to make some condition on that.
Uh, Commissioner, do you have an example of a two hundred square foot uh community service building or civic building that potentially could, could come under this as you've described it?
What I mean is like, that code language that it is today would allow, say, a two hundred square foot um, like pop-up shop to re, be replaced with a, you know, ten thousand square foot community center, right? Because it.
It has to be one civic use replacing another civic use. So it works for a city hall converting to a library.
Can you go back to the, the red code? So this is saying that it's allowed outright and it's the same building or a new building. Right? It's not saying that we're replacing one civic building with another in that snippet. And it's not talking at all about the size, right? So my comment is that, and it says then was possessed by a previous facility or use. It doesn't say what the previous use was. So all I'm saying is this is so lenient that allows the city to get away with any. And we shouldn't just allow anything. There should be conditions there.
I, I had, I, I had some of the same concerns. I think we're a little ambiguous here. I, I see where we're trying to go. But I as well, um, I look at some of the wording and it's, it can invite some because I can see some, some potential shortcomings. And of course, it says whether in a, in a, in a same building, which we're not dealing with, or a new building. Um, is that a replacement building? Is that we're building, you know, we're going to tear down one, and right now the city, not to get too far in the weeds, but the city hall is actually two old buildings. That's why it's a cockeye. You could tear one down, the other would still be there. So uh, I, I just see some vagueness about some of the wording here. Um, even though I, I understand our goal, we still accommodate a library. We're making a change. It's going to be accommodating other things down the road affecting our future and I expressing some legitimate concerns.
Well, one thing I would.
Go ahead, David.
I was just going to say, as the person that was um the author uh of the, of the change, uh, you know, obviously it, it's, it's ultimately the intent of the city in terms of what they adopt and, and what they want to see. Uh, my goal in um, in drafting uh the language, uh, and I think those are some fair points, uh, particularly if, you know, you look at the uh, the community service facility or civic use. The goal was, was to say basically, if you have something that is a uh meets the definition of a community service facility. Uh, if that term is, is used in the uh, uh, section that precedes it in seventeen eighteen. And you substitute it with another community service facility. So something that would again meet uh, that, that definition uh in seventeen eighteen. Um, then whether it's in the same building or buildings or a new building or buildings, uh, there wouldn't be any additional uh parking required uh than, than what existed previously. So it, it, it wasn't uh my, the intent, as I saw it anyway, to say um that you could substitute uh something uh that was now commercial with what was once a community service facility. Uh, the intent would be the same for me and it would make it even more specific if you said uh, actually, there's a couple of things I think you could do is one is strike civic use. Um, that, that may unnecessarily broaden it. If we already talk about what a community service facility is in seventeen eighteen, um, that's from my point of view sufficient. Uh, and then you could say is substituted for another community service facility on the same property. Uh, that would certainly, I think, get to at least um, uh, Commissioner De Offwall's concern, although he can tell me if it doesn't.
Now you get part of it. So I think um, part of it is also the size thing. Um, and I think to Les' part regarding the buildings, maybe we can clarify the building aspect because he's right. We're not replacing one building with another. We're actually replacing two with one. So maybe we can do something regarding building or maybe with parentheses or complex or something in there. Um, I, I would prefer if we're going to be basically granting an exception basically through this rule, that we, we have some condition on size. Um, and like I said, I want us to look at this like we don't know anybody who's going to be using this when it's being used. We don't know what property is being used for, right? Because this is code. It's not, it's not building specific. So, you know, I don't know what percentage we would consider reasonable, but if we were to say like the above thing, if some certain percentage of size growth is okay without that, I would be okay with that. But, you know, I don't think we'd want to say five thousand percent growth is acceptable without changing parking, for example, right? I think we'd have to put some kind of limitation before they'd have to have some kind of variance or something to get it approved, right?
Wouldn't there be uh code limitations though to prevent you from actually building a, a bigger building? You know, you can only build so high already. There's already code there.
Thirty-five feet.
Yeah. So wouldn't there just be natural limitations to how much bigger you could build a building?
No.
It's the same property. You can't build higher. You could probably only go lower, but uh, I just.
No, not, not at all. So if you take one of our local parks, for example, you could easily put a large building footprint on that park land, right? Without requiring additional parking if this is approved. Right?
I don't know. Uh, yeah, theoretically, yes, but I don't know if there's limitations on what type of structures you could build on park property either.
And once again, we are applying this only to a specific zone, uh, not to a zone where we have current uh land used as a park. So the only other building I think that, that potentially this could apply to would be the fire station, which is uh get listed as an example of a community service facility. So if at some point we wanted to convert the fire station to another kind of a building, it would fall under this, this proposed code. But I, I like uh Attorney Doofman's recommendation that we um, even though we don't have it in the first paragraph, it does remove any ambiguity that might be there uh by saying uh one community service facility substitute for another community service facility. Uh, and that takes away uh the uh, Amalachi's concern that perhaps we have, you know, that, that, that it's a that it's a different kind of bil, building being substituted for a different use. Uh, we don't do that in paragraph one, but it's always been understood that when we say uh, one use substituted for another, we mean one commercial use substituted for another commercial use. Uh, in fact, the third paragraph talks about replacing a residential use with a mixed use or commercial use. And that's where you have two different uses and we have different rules applying there. But uh, but I appreciate your concern and as we've said on earlier matters, it's better to make it clearer to people than to leave any ambiguity. So I, I like uh the proposed uh changes in the language and we can look at that as we get closer to concluding our discussion.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
As you are making changes to this section, do you want to say substituted for another commercial use here in item one?
It, it wouldn't hurt. Uh, that would make them a little more consistent with each other and remove any ambiguity uh as far as that.
Is that overreaching what we are discussing tonight by doing that?
Uh, did the public hearing uh indicate uh, a, a limit to what we were going to be discussing that this would, that we would be, I mean, the public notice, uh, no, okay?
We, we would be discussing uh parking requirements in the C two zoning district.
Okay, so that it's the same section. It just adds clarity to it and uh, you know, I, I think a lot of these uh codes that we have just get copied and pasted from another city. They're not necessarily the best language, but we think they're okay at the time we get them. And uh, if we can make them better uh, without making a substantial change to their meaning, uh, then I think providing clarity is a good thing. So uh, if you want to put that in, we can look at it in the context of the whole change and uh consider that change as well.
Can you see, can you still see my screen?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
You know, I have to speak up on this because I, I've got a, my problem a lot is parking and that's where I've had my issues. I think Malachi brought on a, just a phenomenal uh point. And that is what if the down the road, not so much the library, but some, something else that had four people all of a sudden because of what was being built, they have fifteen employees or ten. Um, what's it going to do when Portland Avenue gets built out? And we've got all the people that are working around there, having to park around there. What is it going to do to our businesses for parking?
All right. And again, you're talking about uh the more of the commercial. All right. And again, you're talking about the more of the commercial uses. And this is the, the practice that we've had so far is that if we substitute one commercial use for another, we have not required additions to the off-street parking requirements.
Assuming they're similar in size.
It could, yeah, it could also, also be if you have a bigger building, you're generally going to have more employees. I just see an issue down the road of being able to do what they want because it's in the code.
But it can't exceed ten percent, correct?
Well, the, the building can't expand by more than ten percent, but certainly there are certain uses that might by the nature of their use tend to generate more parking than other uses. I, I think that's Commissioner Williams's concern.
That is correct.
Not the size of the building as much as the nature of the establishment. A restaurant might have more people than a tax accountant or something.
Clearly, clearly we are making a zoning accommodation for a civic building. So we're, we're not, you know, going to verify that we're not going from commercial to commercial. We're going to a noticeably different use. And one looks at the requirements, excuse me, the requirements that we have seventeen parking spots. And that's not realistic. And we certainly want to work, shall we say, around that or accommodate the library downtown. But at the same token here, the, the concern is that now we're saying, well, we'll, we'll make this change. We'll have a civic building here. It's going to generate X amount of traffic. It already does across the street. It's likely to generate even more. And where are these folks going to park? And so I've, I've got some hesitancy about the concept here, even though the language should we move forward? I'm comfortable with the language. I'm comfortable with what we're trying to do here. But I'm not real comfortable that convenience of the library, we're saying we don't have to add any parking or give any consideration to parking here because it's a civic building. And one says that the, we can't, we can't consider, I don't believe the property across the street, the current library in this conversation. But if that sells or redevelops or that parking disappears, where are we now? And a goal, a transportation goal of reducing reliance on the automobile or reducing automobile usage downtown is not the primary criteria here. We're attempting to address a parking shortage. And so I'm, I'm really concerned. We're, we're back to the chicken and the egg. I'll just end with that.
I agree with you on the parking side because every time we went to the planning commission, the parking law.
Malachi, I can't hear you.
I think you froze.
Okay.
Regarding the chicken and the egg, I did some other research before the meeting. There was no off-street parking related to the current city, city hall police station building. I believe that one police car parks in what may be technically the fire department building. I'm not sure where the boundaries end. But I, I asked city staff to weigh in on the impact of city employees using the old city hall police station and received a reply. Typically, the number of administration, court and police employees that occupied the old city hall police station site during weekday work hours was eighteen people plus four part-time employees. And according to city administrator Betts, approximately two of the eighteen parked their personal vehicles at the public works facility, those were two police officers during their shift. But the, all the rest of the city employees parked on Dartmouth Street, Portland Avenue and Exeter Street. So for a number of years, the absence of off-street parking for the city hall and police station meant that there was a lot more on-street parking being used by the city employees. That does not include people who come for court dates or people who come for meetings and other activities at the building. Now, the new civic building and police station on the north end of Portland Avenue has thirty-six parking sites, including three handicap spots, four carpool parking spaces and twenty-nine regular parking spaces, plus ten off-street parking sites directly adjacent on Dunaway Street. The police department has its own secured parking lot. So I, I would offer that in terms of a chicken and an egg, we've dealt with part of that equation by moving a building that had no off-street parking to a facility that now has a great deal of off-street and on-street parking. And we've, we've gained a considerable net gain in parking in our downtown area. The diagonal parking space is adjacent to what will be the new library will not technically be on-site or off-street. But they will be close enough that if I want to go to the library and bring my two and four-year-old grandchildren in their car seats in the back, I'll be able to get them out of the car seats and walk directly to the sidewalk and to the building without having to cross the street. But, you know, and, and I think that what we brought up at the beginning, the possibility, and this is what the library board and, and the library task forces have assumed all along, is that the existing library parking lot would, would continue to be available. It wouldn't be on-site, but it would be off-street parking in close proximity to the new library.
But based on the earlier comment, we cannot make that assumption.
That's correct. That, that's, that's the assumption they've been making, but we, it's not guaranteed.
Yeah, and while I.
Yes, that is the assumption they've been making.
Well, I do appreciate that the civic building allowed us to gain more parking as a city. The concern I have is the number of people who currently park at the library versus how many parking spots they will have at the new library. It's going to be less. And I realize we can't afford the space for them to park on site. Like, that's just not possible. Some of the original building designs we had asked to do a couple of years ago would have allowed for that, but that's not what we're doing. So assuming that we don't have that property that might get sold and assuming we do not have space on property to do parking. And assuming that they keep those diagonal parking spots that are there, because they may not, those are probably the only parking that that library will have. Is that correct?
Well, if you assume that we won't use the current parking, the current library building as parking for the library, then yes, the off-street parking on the on-street parking would be the library parking. And one of the other recommendations coming out of the downtown revitalization report was the need to better utilize existing off-street parking that other buildings and other businesses have. For example, the parking adjacent to the market and Bogies and the teriyaki restaurant across the street. You know, there are a lot of parking lots where business owners could get together and decide how, what would be a good way to share that parking. So it's utilized well at times when the needs of various businesses don't overlap, the hours that businesses are being used.
Yeah, and sorry for dropping there. My internet dropped out.
Oh, that's okay. It happened to me last night at another meeting. All right. Further discussion on this?
So there is a blank space there that we should probably fill in.
Well, I, I did not hear a consensus from all of the members of the planning commission about whether or not you all wanted to include this. I heard some say not expanded by more than ten percent. I heard some indicate that this was not needed. And so I, I didn't know if we wanted to include this or not. And so I don't know if we want to consider twenty percent or if we want to do ten percent or if we want to remove it altogether.
I don't offhand know the square footage of the existing combine, combination city hall police station, the old one. So I don't know how a six thousand square foot library would, you know, what percentage would specifically apply in this case. We are replacing a two-story building with a one-story building. So my guess is that we're actually talking about a lower square footage of floor area in the new library than we have in the existing city hall police station. Any input from, from committee members on proposed amendments to the language?
I, I, I'm still having a tough time with parking and it's not so much for this existing library. It's when, again, I'm going to throw Malachi's great comment, which was looking into the future, ten years from now. What will they do? What, what, where, where will that take? When everything gets that much more busy or that busier? It's just going to get worse. It's not going to get better.
You mean worse from the perspective of not having free parking in front of the destination that you want to go to? That would, that would be, in your perspective, worse.
Or if I want to even go enjoy the library. And, and we've got a busier downtown. People are going to be, where are they going to be parking? Whereas, you know, when whoever is employed, they're taking up a space for pretty much most all the day. So, you know, more employees, more people, less parking. And, yeah, just again, looking into the future and the future is, is not that bright by the way this is written. I mean, in this instance, we've got it and it's here. I don't know if there can be an exception, but the, the way that it's stated is, is uncomfortable to me.
Chairman Milt?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
I, I think there's a context here that's missing. I've lived in the Portland metro area since I was in the first grade. And I've often been a patron of the downtown Homer County Library. If you've never, any of you that have never been there, it's a terrific building, wonderful. They've never had a, a scintilla of off-street parking. But it works because of the community that it's in. Gladstone is not that type of a community. You mentioned taking your two grandchildren to the library, you would be in your car. And most people, I think, who probably go to the community library either walk or drive. It's, it's, other commissioners have made this, I'm just restating what's already been said, but this is a code issue. It's not a single building permit issue that we're talking about. It just seems way too broad brush of a, to work long-term. Again, another neighboring community, anybody that's enjoys an evening in a restaurant, and that was still possible, Division Street is aligned with restaurants from twenty to thirty-ninth street. And they park in four and five block directions off of Division. And, you know, granted, that's not going to happen in my lifetime in Gladstone. Because that begins to encroach, you're going to have a lot of unhappy citizens of the neighborhoods along our streets. Parking needs to be considered. A broad-brush statewide parking regulation doesn't fit everywhere.
What do you mean by broad-brush statewide?
Here we go. You know, we're bringing this in because this has been done, as you said, we cut and paste other regulations into our code. And we, we need to do something that seems appropriate for Gladstone. And while this isn't necessarily bad, it just doesn't seem to be right for Portland Avenue.
So in the meeting minutes for last month, you all indicated that the previous public hearing felt rushed. And would you like to request that staff put our heads together about this one more time? And let you all consider it and bring more information?
I second that motion.
Oh, that was not a motion. This is staff. This is joy.
It's just, I'm just kidding.
All right. I will say that when we, when we first proposed making this change, I had a concern that, that the way the amendment would be written would be to complete, to treat commercial and civic uses the same. That David was going to just add the, the phrase or community service facility to paragraph one, which would have allowed a lot more flexibility in both commercial and community service facilities. And I was pleased to see that when he submitted the language, he had separated it out. He had minimized the change in the code to the smallest change that could be made that would address the issue that we have and did not broaden it to make a, a more substantial change that would have a much greater impact on the community. So I, as much as I, you know, understand the concerns about the overall parking situation in the downtown area, and I know that that's something we want to be addressing more fully in the future. I, I personally am happy with the limits of this particular proposed amendment. And, but I, I want to hear from the rest of you and see whether you want to have more time to think about it or reconsider some other language.
Chair, Commissioner Foles here. I, I think because of the length of the conversations and the depth we've had to go into this evening. And I'm, I'm, I, I agree. Everyone likes to move things forward, but I see enough uncertainty that I really would make a make a motion that we table this for, for some further consideration and try and finish this up next, at our next meeting.
All right. It's been moved that we table consideration of this amendment and reschedule it for next month. Planner Fields, would it be possible, or maybe Tammy Bannock knows the answer to this. If we schedule a date for this meeting, if it's our normal August meeting, do we have time to provide public notice if that's necessary? Or have we already completed the public hearing and?
Um, you have, I don't believe you have closed the public hearing yet.
I, I thought I did, since we didn't have any members of the public.
I think you may have, actually.
I think I did, yes.
Yes. Um, so.
Really our, our discussion of it, that's, and we could reopen it, I guess. We have that option as well. Is that right?
You, you could, yeah. Especially given the legislative nature of it, that's, that's, that's really not an issue. You would certainly be able to carry it over if you wanted to, to your next meeting and, and and staff wouldn't need to go through a whole re-noticing process. Just that act alone would be sufficient. You know, one other thought I might have, just, you know, for the commission's consideration would be generally in land use planning, you don't like to, you know, call out specific types of uses and, and having something that would be so specific to the library per se. It's just a little too, I mean, the, the idea with this, obviously, it's a given that the library is sort of motivating this and is the impetus for, for at least tonight's discussion. But it is also trying to do right and, and implement the revitalization plan and what it talks about. So there is a, I guess, an intent, whether that's good or bad, I guess, is, is what. So, there is a, I guess, an intent, whether that's good or bad, I guess, is, is what you're all discussing tonight about, you know, the possibility of other types of community uses that would potentially benefit from this in the future. So, maybe part of the, yeah, if it is continued, would be getting into a discussion and the consideration a little bit about the size. That might be helpful for staff, so we can kind of, you know, think about this over the coming weeks before your next meeting is if, like the existing standard, has a limitation on the amount, granted, it's a, it's dealing with the same building. But if there were a limitation on how big either an existing building can be expanded or a new building can be built, would that, would that make a difference for at least some of the planning commissioners? I think that'd be worth a few minutes of your time because that might help us shape what would come back before you.
And we, we would, we would know what the dimensions of the current building are and the proposed library. Again, that makes it very, you know, focused on a particular single use, but we would know whether we would, we could put some figures in there that would, that would make sure that we complied with that and remove the concern about a considerable expansion of the building because that, that is more likely to create additional need for parking, which is what the focus of this amendment is.
And, and at the risk of putting, you know, thoughts into the commissioner's heads, I'm not hearing necessarily that there's a, a strong objection. If, if we were just to write this in the most straightforward, direct way possible for the library, City Hall is there, we substitute the library for City Hall, and there's no additional parking. I haven't heard tonight that, that that in and of itself creates a lot of heartburn. But rather, it's more about, well, but what about, maybe to Commissioner De Offwalde's example? If you had something in the future that was, you know, very small, and then you took something that was huge and you had no consideration for any additional parking. If that's really the nut of sort of the concern, then I think it seems to me that you could come up with a, something along the lines of a percentage limitation in size, whatever that might be, that could address that and, and, and yes, ultimately still accommodate what is being envisioned for the library.
Okay, and.
It's really a question as much as it is a, a statement.
All right. Commissioner Natalie Smith, you had a comment as well?
I was gonna say, what Commissioner Malachi said, I, if there were some changes with what he had presented, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm on the same page as him.
If I may speak, Commissioner Williams here. It's not so much, in my opinion, as to the size of the building would be like a restaurant moving in there. If we have 100 people a day that's, whatever, that are actually having to park their in and out a lot. It's the amount and, and also the employees. So it's the true parking, not so much just the size of the building. It's, it's, it's use, intended use, and what is, are we changing the amount of people that are moving in and out and are they fast or they slow? You know, what is the turnover gonna be potentially up parking? Is, people want to come to town, they want to be able to park. Like Mr. Smith said, he goes off to Division and you gotta park four to five blocks away to get to a restaurant. And it's, we, I would hate to see, because of making a bad decision, that that is a hindrance for the development of Gladstone.
Well, and at some point, we, we set, one of our goals for this year was to implement the, some of, you know, whichever of the recommendations of the downtown revitalization plan that we want to try to implement. And Appendix B of that plan that was adopted in early 2018 includes several suggested changes in our codes. Our housing code audit that was conducted last year addresses some of those recommended changes and some of them are given sort of approval and some of them are, you know, they're, they raise some questions about their validity. So, I think we need to look at all of that in the context of a larger discussion about parking and downtown. And since this one particular decision will have a big impact on parking by creating a use in the downtown area, then I don't know that it, that we should try to, I concede the value in postponing a decision on this right now. But we are doing this for the benefit of the library planning task forces, the architects who have engaged into some design ideas. We have a very specific square footage that that building, that the county is building is going to be. And we are, we have a very specific site. So rather than do this as a variance from existing code, you know, that was the reason we tried to amend the code. But I'm, I'm hearing enough concern that, that maybe postponing it, as Joy suggested, is the way to go. Other comments? All right. We have a motion on the floor to table consideration of this amendment. Remind me, it's been so long. Did we approve the changes in the language for the ADU, the vacation route? We did that as a separate, okay, so we took action on that. So, we had a separate motion and now we're, the motion has been made to table that. Was there a second to tabling the motion?
I'll second it. That's, Commissioner Smith.
All right. I don't remember who made the original motion to table. I believe it was Commissioner Poole and Commissioner Pat Smith has seconded that motion. I don't know that we need to do a roll call for a table motion, so all those in favor of tabling action on this matter indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed indicate by saying no.
No.
No. All right. And the motion appeared to pass six votes to one. So, we have tabled the action on this matter.
Chair Milch, there were two that said no.
Two that said no. Okay. I couldn't see everyone on my screen, so let the minutes reflect that. Thank you.
I am correct. Lang, Mr. Langston?
Correct, yes.
And Chair Milch, both said no. Okay.
Well, that is the, that is the last amendment or last motion that we had on the regular agenda. We were going to continue some discussion of the annual work plan and some elements of that kind of worked into tonight's discussion. So I think we've done what we'll do there. I think we want to try to put this discussion in the, into the context of parking and the downtown revitalization plan when we discuss it next month. And I will perhaps provide some additional information and some additional documents that will help us look at it in the context of those issues that several of you raised tonight. So I appreciate that. The next item on the agenda is, well, business from the audience, which we don't have, and so.
Wait, wait, Chair Milch?
Yes.
Chair Milch, there, there was a member that joined us recently. I don't know if Bob has anything to say. But there is a community member who joined us recently.
All right. I cannot see everyone on my screen. If, if we, if we remove the shared screen item, well, let me just ask. So, oh, Bob.
Yes, I'm just auditing it. We're up next month, so, next commission meeting.
Okay.
So I'm just auditing it.
So you don't have any input on this particular issue, then?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Well, let's do business from the members of the commission. And I will start with, well, we'll just go in order. So I will start with Commissioner Langston. And Commissioner Langston, let us know what your housing situation is these days.
Did I? I'm sorry. I, I think my internet cut out there for a minute. Can you repeat that? Yeah, it's telling me I'm unstable in a lot of ways, right?
Aren't we all?
So, did you have any business to bring to us tonight or anything else that you wanted for the, for the, for the group? And I, and I raised the question too because I, you're a neighbor of mine and I noticed that your house is being listed. And so if you want to share, update the rest of the commission on that status, that would be helpful to us.
Yep. My house is up for sale and I did sell it. And we actually did procure a home in Gladstone again, so.
You had told me at one time that you thought you might end up in Oregon City, so that's very good news to us. So you will still be here as a resident.
That's great, Andrew.
And that was great, that you're staying because I threatened him if he moved to Oregon City.
Yeah, we couldn't do it. We just, luckily, you know, everything ended the way we were hoping and so, yep, yep, we're staying in Gladstone.
That's good.
I just had a couple of observations recently, you know. Number one is on the corner Abernathy and Glen Echo on the trolley trail. That, the, the entrance onto the, the rockway there is a little off-centered. And I've actually witnessed a couple bike accidents from people hitting the curb because it's not, the ramp doesn't directly, directly give access straight onto the path. And I didn't know what we could do about that particular item. It was pretty sad. I have seen a couple accidents.
All right.
Excuse me, excuse me, is that on the Gladstone south side? Because the city line's right there. Are you talking about on the north? You're talking about Abernathy and Glen Echo?
Yep.
Okay, because right there is where the trolley trail changes jurisdiction, right?
Yeah, but it's on the, it's on the south side. It's on the south side.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, it's just that, that ramp kind of wants to, if you're standing on the corner, the ramp wants to send you kind of into the center of the street instead of directly across the street. And it creates a lip there and, and people riding their bikes hit that lip. You know, it sends them off a little funny and I witnessed multiple accidents.
All right. That's good, good observation. Thank you for sharing that. You know, folks who get around in the city, we notice things, especially people with that, that kind of background and building experience. So, good observation. We'll make sure that's reflected in the minutes. Commissioner, oh, you said a couple of things. Was there something?
Oh, yeah. And then I just, with people being at home with COVID and all, I do, I have noticed a lot of people out moving around. And one byproduct of that is increase in pet droppings around our city. And I just hope that everybody would be responsible with their pets and clean up after them when you're out on your walks.
Yeah, a lot of folks bring that point up on social media, trying to shame one another into obeying the rules. But, yeah, it's definitely an issue. All right. Commissioner Natalie Smith?
I only have one thing this evening, as I passed where the old Tivos used to be. Do we have a mechanism that lets the planning commission know when an individual or a company has responded and rectified whatever complaints and or problems there was? Because I don't know if they ever followed through with what was requested of them to fix their items regarding their, their plan.
This is the Cars Planet.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Fields, do you have an answer to that? Do you get a, a final report that closes out a project that, of that nature?
I am supposed to get a final landscaping plan from them. There is no mechanism. What?
Yeah. It's been quite a few months since that was requested. Yeah.
Yep.
And I think when, you know, all of us being citizens of the community bring something to the commission and say, hey, this needs to be rectified, we should have something in place that lets us know when it's been accomplished or whomever, you know, needs to follow up on that to make, to ensure that it gets completed. So I, I, I was passed there this last week and I'm like, yeah, I don't think they've followed through on anything that they were supposed to.
But the gravel does appear to be growing up in grass.
Yeah. So, what is our next step to make sure they follow through with what they need to do?
I can send them an email and request that they provide that to us and see where that goes. And then you can keep your eyes out and see if anything changes and if we need to get anyone else involved.
Well, the next step would be Sean going, our compliance officer would be going to inspect and say, you know, here's a citation, you need to have this taken care of, I'm assuming. We've been extremely lenient with them and that is at a pivotal place as you enter into Gladstone. And I feel it's very important that it's, it's kept as beautifully as it was for almost 40-some years when it was the restaurant. That was always beautifully manicured and it's not looking the same anymore. So I, that's the only thing I wanted to bring up, is if we could follow through on that.
I will send them an email.
Thank you very much. That's all.
Natalie. All right. Malachi, do you have any? Business from the, oh, I think you're still frozen as I look at you, so I cannot hear you. Are there? You, you moved on my screen.
Who are you asking about?
I was asking you. You were frozen on my screen, so it was your turn. If you have any mission, business for the commission?
I would just say that I really apologize for my internet really sucking tonight. I missed quite a bit that was said over the last half hour or so, so hopefully the minutes will be good for me to follow up with.
I hope everyone will connect with Ethernet next time. I don't know if it's Wi-Fi that slows it down or what, but this happens frequently.
What's that?
I said, I don't know if it's a Wi-Fi matter or if Ethernet makes it a little more reliable.
It doesn't usually happen. I'm on it all day during work, but tonight it's pretty bad.
Everybody else is home watching Netflix. They're taking away all your bandwidth.
Exactly.
Okay. Commissioner Poole?
Yeah, just briefly, most, most of you are aware that Thursday Metro passed or moved forward with the $3 billion transportation T-2020 bond measure. So that's gonna be on the ballot in November and it's gotten a little big and a little out of hand, but there's some good projects in there, including the, the trolley bridge and extending Highway 212 out towards 172nd. So, that's an awfully big ask in today's times and the outcome of that is certainly going to affect our, our future here. So, please share that with folks and, and everyone get up to speed on what that will be putting on the ballot in November.
I'm sure that as a public official, you are not taking, as a public official, you're not taking a position one way or the other, but you want us to be well informed before we vote.
You're still, you're muted, Bess.
Sorry. Yeah, Bess, that I was muted, right? I would, I would say that in the future I will take the position and, and it is a tough one. This really is a tough one because there's things in there we need and then we look at the amount. And, and so down the road, we're, we're gonna hear a lot about it. And as folks that are making transportation decisions in Gladstone, we're reliant on some of the, the money that may come from that bond. So, it's a big one and we'll see where it goes.
Well, yes. As you point out, one of the, one of the projects in, proposed on that is the streetscaping for the downtown revitalization. So we've talked about that a little bit tonight and again, not taking a position one way or the other on the bill, but potentially that will involve Gladstone direct. So, Commissioner Williams?
First thing, I'd like to apologize for my late attendance. I will try to make sure that doesn't happen, but it did. All is good. It was, it's nice to be on and talking and being able to share my information, or at least the way that I see things and listen to others. And we're moving forward, not as, not as quickly as I know we'd like at times, but I think we're making good, rational decisions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yeah, I've just got a couple of things and brevity will be foremost in my comments. First of all, I want to compliment you, City Administration and Joy for working hard to put on good meetings in, in not the best environment. I would ask, and this may be something that's set up in my own computer, but Joy, on your PowerPoint, I could only see about the left-hand two-thirds of what you're, and it makes it difficult to conceptualize. And I'm wondering in the future if printed versions of that, as long as we're doing it this way, printed versions of this kind of thing could be included in our packets, so it's a little easier, at least for me, to digest. And the last one, and again, Joy mentioned that Chairman Milch brought up at the end of our last meeting. He asked everybody what their thought of what we had just gone through. And I believe everyone indicated some sense of, that felt it was moving a little quicker than it ought to. I realize that we have to play well with Clackamas County and with Metro, that there are partners in these things. But I also think that if we come to a position where we're just doing what they tell us to do or recommend that we do, there's really no need to have a planning commission, and we're not doing the citizens of Gladstone a service. I felt the conversation tonight about parking was good. I think we'll come out of it with something probably better than we went into it with tonight. And that comes from opinions and pushback from our colleagues on this commission.
All right, thank you. Good observation. I appreciate that. Councilor Mercero, you've been listening in. Do you have any comments or anything you'd like to share with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I, I can see that the group has a huge challenge. You worked pretty hard tonight to, to try to make things right in your minds, which I think are very important for the planning commission. As a recommendation, Chair Milch, I think there is, I'm, I'm making an opinion here, it's my opinion, but the commission has more thoughts than you sometimes help them to speak out. And I think there's a lot of good ideas out there. And you might consider working hard to share their ideas versus making your opinion flourish over the others. I don't know if that made a lot of sense, but.
Sure. I will, I will give consideration to that comment. Thank you very much, Commissioner Merc, or Councilor Mercero. All right, I want to say thank you to David Doofman and to Jackie Betts and Tammy Bannack for being present and helping us tonight. David, for your hard work in preparation for the meeting. And so if there are any additional input from you, Jackie or Tammy?
I just want to know where Bob's iPhone 6 is driving to.
I want to thank Joy Fields very much for all of her.
Yes.
You can look, I'm on the Intel campus in Hillsboro.
All right.
And there is the largest crane in the United States here putting up, I don't know if you can see that, the counterweights on that thing, it's a Lamson crane.
All we see is your hand, Bob.
Yeah, your hands in front right now, but we, there it is.
There we go.
That's the counterweight?
Yeah, the gray is the counterweight.
Yeah. Crazy.
Those are probably a ton of teeth.
Yeah.
It has two traps on it, front and back. It's just amazing the lift on that. That's the second time they've had it here. I'm no longer with Hillsboro. I used to be Assistant Public Works Director here about three years ago. And they're working on their next expansion. They put $6 billion in the ground here when I was here, and now they're putting probably another three.
Interesting, all right. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Okay.
Well, I, I, if, if I, if I've got a little more involved than I should, I have apologized. The issue that we brought up tonight has been important to me. I serve on the library board. I helped appoint the members of the library task force and have attended most of their meetings. And I served on the downtown revitalization committee that helped to develop the recommendations regarding that as well. So I, I hope that, you know, we'll all, when we get information on this issue for next month, we'll be well-prepared with questions and that you will make sure that I allow you to share your points of view and that we have a good equitable democratic discussion about these issues and, and act in the best interest of our city and our community. If there is nothing else to come before the board tonight, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Might, might you make a motion to adjourn our planning commission meeting?
All right, I heard a motion from Natalie Smith and a second from Commissioner Williams. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.